Good evening. Welcome to this May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you would now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Granquist, Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Muirin, Snorton, Clausen, Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, can you hear me? Is this on? Is it? It's on, okay. With that, that's better. We look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one requested amendment, and that is to remove item number twelve from consent to regular agenda. Okay. Oh, and a second item, request to remove item sixteen.
It can still have consent, we just need to change.
Got you. Okay, all right. This is one, actually, technical amendment to the consent agenda on item number sixteen, and that item should read, with the change, consideration of Resolution Number twenty-two four dash twenty-two, approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of Wyndham Hills Eighth Edition. So with those two changes, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with items twelve and sixteen changes. Second.
Motion and second, and if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. Then I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda, but also with some changes, and those changes are requests to, by the requestee in each case, to remove items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty from the full agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. No discussion, please vote.
Sorry, try again, please. I don't know why it didn't go. There we go. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to our regular agenda, starting with item twelve. I would look for a motion, then, to consider approval of an agreement with Big Bang Boom Incorporated, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, and J and M Displays Incorporated, an Iowa corporation, allowing the use of Skyview Park to be used for the purpose of conducting various activities for a Fourth of July celebration, including but not limited to a fireworks display from Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to Tuesday, July second, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And we evidently will hear from Nate Powell, our Parks and Director, about this.
This is just our agreement with, for Big Bang Boom. This is their standard agreement that we go through annually. I don't know if there's any specific questions of this. I did not have the agreement in front of me today, but...
I think a representative for Big Bang Boom was an opportunity to address the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks for pulling this off the agenda tonight, guys. We don't have any specific problems or anything with the contract that we see it as is. Every year it just gets bigger and bigger, which is not a problem. It actually is good on both parts because everything is very transparent and every, both entities know what's going on. But what I wanted to do, guys, tonight is kind of bring you up to speed on where we are and where it's going so that everybody understands where this event is going. As you know, I'm in charge of Big Bang Boom and have been for too long now. But on behalf of Big Bang Boom, we want to take the opportunity to do a couple things tonight. Number one, you guys know what it takes to do, well, some of you guys know what it takes to do this thing, but we want to express our gratitude to the fire department for keeping us safe out there, and as big or bigger thank you to our police department. None of the guys that are on the police department get that day off. So usually on the Fourth of July or around that fourth, because it's usually the Saturday closest to. They all get to come in and work. So we, you know, they're missing time from their families and all that kind of stuff, and we want to thank them for doing that. And without a doubt, the park always looks pristine. It always looks great, and we are, we got a good relationship with the Parks Department, and anything that we're doing out there is great. So we definitely want to, want to go that route as far as thanking these folks for doing that. But I want you to know, about eighteen years ago, we did an economic impact study on what Boom did for the city of Norfolk for that week, for that day, that one-day event. This was quite a while ago, and it noted a one-point-five-million-dollar economic impact study for this, for the city. So with that in mind, what I want to do is I, I want you, I want you to understand about, I think this is our third, maybe it's our fourth, I think our third year that we have made this a two-day event now. So it is not a one-day event. This puts a lot more heads in beds, obviously, brings more people to our community for the whole weekend. There's a number of things that are, that are trying to tag on to Boom, or, you know, Sunday, there's events now that are starting to happen, and there's a lot of events that happen around this, whether they be company parties, what do you call them, class reunions, things like that. So it's growing huge every year. But going to now Friday, if you guys don't know, obviously, we've elevated this. There's a car show, Car Show and Shine out there. We have a concert out there. The concert this year, we're working with a regional band. So we are elevating this event year by year as we go, and you guys know how big it is. And then there's always the big wing fest out there. So we, we put about, I don't know, eighteen thousand wings that are grilled, and we feed the, feed everybody. Saturday is Boom as you guys know it. We always try and raise the bar a little bit, so on and so forth, as best we can. But in two thousand twenty-six, it's Big Bang Boom's fiftieth anniversary. It's also the United States' two-hundred-and-fiftieth, and it lands on Saturday, July fourth. The stars could not line up better on this. So we are, we are putting a committee together made up of folks from the city, folks from the community and stuff, to plan this event. Our plan is to double the size of our fireworks show, so you can only imagine what that'll be like. We are planning, and we have been planning for well over a year already. We are planning for fifty thousand people out at Skyview Lake, so it's going to take a lot more organization and so on and so forth. And we are in, literally in the midst of ink in the contract with a national ban for that Saturday night. We are planning this far ahead. The intention there is to take this event now, on that Saturday, have a national ban on Saturday night. So you can only imagine what that's going to do for our community and how many folks it's going to bring into our, to our town on, hopefully from then on. So now the big one. I need financial help. We have never come to the city for financial help. We understand that the city puts a lot into this, and we don't overlook that at all from the fire department, police department, and the parks department. But in order to take this, what is known as a national event or a world-class fireworks show, to keep going to the next level, the only thing we can do is add more dollars to it. And we do with our committee, which is obviously a hundred percent volunteerism across this, the whole place, and we've got a great committee, and we have done a great job of getting money from our community, and they've been very, very supportive. We can't thank them enough. But I am now going to ask the city for financial support in any way, shape, or form that you guys can. So that is the ask tonight. We want to take this event to do what it's, what our city has been done, doing for the last few years, is growing and becoming a great city to stay and live and work and play and make this event even bigger. So that is the ask, folks. I want some, some financial support from the city. I don't know what there is. I don't know who to ask other than this body right here. So that's my ask.
I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Somebody asked me, how much money do you want?
Right.
That's right.
Right.
Is that a question?
That, that's the next question, right.
If I had to answer that, guys, I'm seriously, I'd have to look for twenty-five thousand annually. I'd ask for a hundred if I thought I could get it, but I know that's probably a little overboard. But that's kind of an ask, so.
Counsel, any questions for Don while he's up here? I think it's an appropriate time to express our appreciation to the Big Bang Boom Committee and yourself, Don, for years of hard work making this happen. A lot of people talk about ideas, and then there are others who make big ideas happen, and you guys have certainly done that. And year in and year out, we recognize how much work goes into it. We do commend the Parks and Fire and Police staff for their, their help and assistance, but I, I certainly don't think you're out of bounds in making such a request, especially given your intent to especially make two thousand twenty-six a special year in that tradition's history. So I think that's something, and I'm glad you put a number to it because that's a starting place for us. And as we start to deliberate budget cycles this year, it's, it's a good time, too, because we're, we're at that point in the year where we're going to start having those discussions. So, sorry. Yep, I'm done.
Okay. The only thing would be, this year's fiscal, we'd have to see, because if there's only two places these funds could probably come from, that'd be Keno dollars or council prior dollars, and that would be, have to come from what's available in this year's already pre-approved budget. So it would be, so that'd be, have to, something Randy would have to dig into and see if there's, you know.
Randy, council wages maybe could help. We just take those or something.
I don't think you'd get there.
You might not get twenty-five grand.
One thing I... Is your ask for this year for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six?
You know, whatever. If it, if it isn't, if it isn't twenty-five this year, maybe it's ten, maybe it's twenty the following year. You know, I don't know. We'll come up with something. One thing I do want to mention, too, is this is, we have not gone public with this either, and it's, people are finding out slowly but surely, but this year's event is the Saturday prior to the fourth. We're taking a little bit of heat over that, so be it, because it's usually the closest Saturday to the fourth. But we are staying within that ten-day fireworks period and such, and we have kind of learned that, folks, somewhat by the time ten days of fireworks is over, our attendance goes down when it's after the fourth, because it's like, I've had enough of that already. So we did stay inside that or prior to the fourth. Next year, it will be after the fourth, but.
How's fundraising going for it, Don? Each year, does fundraising keep growing, or does it stay the same, or?
It, it kind of stays the same, and then what we do is we always try and find new money, because we always have some that decide not to contribute. And so we, there's a heck of a committee that gets put together, and we go over lists of new businesses in town and how further out, how much further out we can reach. We put a lot of effort into the fundraising, so that's a lot of our time, to be honest with you, is making sure that we're finding those funds.
But it's stayed, it's stayed pretty flat, pretty consistent.
No, we, we have a goal of raising it a few thousand dollars every year, because that's the only way we can make the show better. So if we don't raise that five thousand every year, two years ago, we took a thirty percent increase on fireworks, most of it related to transportation costs, getting that stuff across the water. Sorry, it all comes from China. I know that's a bad word, but that's where that comes from. So we took a major hit two years ago, and it's, the cost has leveled out now this year, thank God. But to answer your question, it's going good because we put the efforts into it, but we're still going to, we're not going to make it to two thousand twenty-six to the budget we want unless we get some additional help. I thank you for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
One, one front of quote, you cited one-point-five-million-dollar economic impact estimate from a few years ago. How long ago was that?
It was about eighteen years ago. We had an individual on our committee that was involved with the Nebraska Economic Department, so we put the counters across the road and did everything as far as what an economic impact subsidy was supposed to take. We followed all those rules and did it and based it off of that.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
So, Don, I do have a question for you. Did you say you were looking for contributions annually or just for the fiftieth anniversary?
Annually. It, it needs to be annually so that we can continue. If we start this national ban on a Saturday night, I mean, we lost a bunch of concerts here in town, so let's bring at least one more back. So if we can do this on Boom, you know, on that Saturday of Boom, by having a national ban in and do that every year, obviously, it will take the funds on an annual basis.
Are you thinking national ban this year or?
No. Two thousand twenty-six is when we're trying to do that, but we have gone to a regional ban for this Friday, this year, this Friday. So funds are going toward that a little bit, but hopefully we'll be all right. But...
And that live music will still remain free to the public?
It is all free, yes.
Do we get to pick the band?
What's that?
Do we get to pick the band?
As long as it's Metallica or something like that, you bet. We have not announced who the band is, but we are in the middle of ink in the contract, so hopefully that will come out sooner than later. Good family entertainment, that's what it will be. Thanks again, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Don. All right. Any other discussion on this item? Our council discussion. Hearing none, please vote.
Are we approving finances?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. It's half a sensitive. No, the motion in front of you, item number twelve, the agreement with the Parks Department.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. That moves us to item number twenty-three, under Public Hearings and Related Action. I will open this public hearing at the request of Chad and Brooke Licking to consider zoning change from A agricultural district to R one, one and two-family residential district on property addressed as thirty-four oh six Anderson Street. And to kick off discussion here, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val?
Thank you. This zone change is actually out on Cedar Lake. If you go down the east side of where houses are already built, there's still a couple extra lots down there at the end of the, the street, and this is one of them. A person, these people have bought this, and they want to put a single-family house on there, but because it's ag-zoned, there are large setbacks, fifteens on the sides and fifty front and rear, and they can't fit what they want on there with those large setbacks. And this fits in R one zoning because pretty much all of the lots out there are about a third of an acre. So the size of lots out there can fit anywhere in, in town, so kind of fits that R one zoning. If there's any questions.
They have sewer and water ran up to that already, right?
They have sewer. They don't have water, so it would be on a well, but it would be hooked to city sewer. Yeah.
You said it's what size lot?
They're all about a third of an acre.
And, and are they sharing a well?
No, each one has its own well, I believe. Each lot has its own well.
Okay. There any chance you can put that up on the screen just to show where it's at?
Yep. So the red outlined is the lot that we're talking about for the zone change, and I just kind of did a rough estimate of kind of showing the sizes of the other lots next to it. If I zoom out, so this is Cedar Lake.
And the other lots, south of that, also undeveloped right now?
Correct. And the pavement stops at that next lot down, so whoever would develop those would have to then pave and continue the, the street.
And do any of those vacant lots have a well on them?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
If they did want to develop it, would they be able to put a well in each one of those?
There are technically lots of record, so yes, we couldn't stop the well if water wasn't out there, right?
Any further questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will ask for a Planning Commission report, please.
Planning Commission, Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Chad and Brooke Licking on May fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for a zoning change from A agricultural district to R one, one and two-family residential district. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, thank you. I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item twenty-four. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight eighty-one for a zone, for a zoning change from A to R one on property addressed as thirty-four oh six Anderson Street.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight eighty-one for a zoning change from agricultural to R one. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on this, counsel? Okay. Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight eighty-one carries on first reading.
Seeing the opposition, I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules and pass on second and third?
Second.
Motion and second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight eighty-one carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us to item thirty-one on the regular agenda. We look for a motion to consider approval for the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the design-build contract with Huff Construction, approved by council on March fourth, establishing the guaranteed maximum price to complete the design and to construct the team lockers in the Ata Zuka Park in the amount of one-point-four-one-one million dollars.
Your honor, I will abstaining from this vote, please.
Okay. Consider a motion.
Make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, Parks and Director.
Hey, Mayor and Council. So before you, as an amendment to our design-build contract with Huff Construction, the conditions of the original RFP were met. Originally, we were looking at one million three hundred and fifty thousand for a four-thousand-square-foot facility, but during the design-build process, and as part of this, this design process, working with the schools and also I've been in contact with the donor as well, or the donor representative, we felt that an additional three hundred square feet would help with the, the batting cages in this facility. That would, you know, provide adequate spectator and coaching space for the, for the batters. And also, we're doing precast walls, and, and we're going to do a hardened storm shelter in the restrooms, which we felt was important for our, our space out there. So the, all three of these were kind of outside of that original scope, and that brought us to one million four hundred and eleven thousand. This is our guaranteed maximum price. This also includes thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two thousand, thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars in contingency, but if it, it will not exceed one million four hundred and eleven thousand. It's a guaranteed maximum price. We have one million six hundred and thirty-three thousand budgeted. This is funded by the schools and also the Mallon B. Kohler Estate donation that we received, and that was six hundred and ninety-eight thousand going towards youth facilities, and that's where the batting cages are being funded. And we also have a hundred and thirty-five thousand budgeted for this as well. So those remaining funds are going to replace the backstops field, on fields one and three. We've done two already. We're going to remodel the press box, refurbish the restrooms into a family restroom and an umpire locker room, and the construction will start in a few weeks. It'll be substantial completion by November thirtieth. Staff recommends approving the amendment, the amendment to the design-build contract with Huff Construction, an amount of one million four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And I believe Huff Construction representatives are here, and also representatives from the schools are also here. Any questions?
Thank you, Nate. Any questions?
I just got to comment. I think that's really a great idea, putting that storm shelter in there, because that's kind of out in the middle of nowhere, and, and if they do get, you know, a storm approaching, so that's a good add.
Just to make clear, when you reference the schools, you're talking about Norfolk Public Schools and Northeast Community College.
That's correct, yes. And at the completion of this project, they're also going to be paying fifty percent of their costs of using our facilities. It's, that's when the, the agreement kicks in, is when this is completed.
Great model of collaboration and cooperation to make this work. So we appreciate the partner organizations here. Thank you, Nate. Any other discussion on this, public input? Or further discussion from the council? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arns, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen, abstaining. Motion carries. Abstaining Muirin, motion carries.
Okay, for the next item, item thirty-two, I will ask Councilman Clausen to come take the chair. Andy and I will leave the dais as the item pertains to a property and involves a property of which the Norfolk Area Economic Development Foundation owns, and we sit on the board of that organization. Oh, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to need a motion to remove item number thirty-two from the table.
I'll make a motion to remove item thirty-two from the table. Second.
They got to get me moved up to where I, so I can vote. Hold on a second here.
We're just going to do a roll.
Roll call, okay.
So the motion on the floor is to remove ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-seven from the table. Granquist?
Yes.
Arns?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Muirin?
So the motion on the floor is to remove ordinance number 5877 from the table. Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Muran?
Yes.
Snorton?
Yes.
Clausen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All right.
Now you need a motion, this is second reading. For ordinance, consideration ordinance number 5877 approving a zoning change from C3 Service Commercial District to C2 Central Commercial District on property addressed at 105 East Norfolk Avenue. Ordinance number 5877 passed on first reading on the April 15th, 2024 city council meeting, and was tabled at the May 6th, 2024 city council meeting.
I'll offer for consideration.
All right, any discussion?
When we tabled this at our last meeting on May 6th, I believe we were talking about some some parking requirements and issues, and we were hoping to get some type of maybe a tentative plan to move forward with that.
Correct.
So I was just following up on what was the tentative plan for the parking concerns and issues?
I believe there was a meeting held on Friday, and there was some discussion there, maybe not Steve, so Steve, you attended that meeting? Go ahead and share, give us an update on that.
Yeah, so on last Friday, staff met with all members of the vehicle parking district, members of the foundation, a couple landowners that are in that area that have the potential for some additional parking. We also visited, there was a kind of a key party that was not able to attend, but staff has had conversation with them as well. We talked about, you know, just the growth of downtown, we talked about this, the previous proposed development there at Norfolk and First. We also talked about the Johnson Park activity and the and the potential for parking needs relative to that, and just how right now, there's kind of synergy between those two, those two conversations. I would report that the the landowners, well, the landowners present were were Al Regi with with his auto dealerships there and some conversation around the the pending move of Nissan and what what his thoughts were, what he might be doing. We also, Faith Regional was in attendance and just visited with them about the old Pringer site and and kind of what their plans were and and any thoughts around the use of that as potential parking. Gene Walker with Hy-Vee was not able to make the meeting, but we have had conversation with Gene, he's very open. Hy-Vee has some agreements that date back to the construction there of that Hy-Vee site, dealing with some of the parking up front. He's very open to kind of putting those agreements on the table and 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 having conversations around that. Some of the conversation led to, you know, expansion of specifically that that south side of Norfolk Avenue, what a lot of people might consider to be the north side of the Harvey, Hy-Vee parking lot. The city has some parking in there, Faith Regional has parking in there, and then Hy-Vee has parking in there, and our our parking is is part of what's under some some agreement there with Hy-Vee. But, you know, there would certainly be a potential to expand VPD over into that area and use some of that as as additional public parking. Faith Regional, the representative there indicated that he would carry the conversation back, he was he specifically was not opposed to people using that Pringer site for parking, but he couldn't commit long term to what Faith Regional may or may not want to do with that site. He said there'd need to be some additional conversation there. Speaking with another landowner in that area, they have some vacant, it's a vacant lot kind of south of the Hy-Vee gas station. They've been, from a river activity perspective, just in terms of that particular component of parking load, you know, they are, they're, they would be interested in some conversation about, again, additional using that space for parking either under a a land lease or some other, some other agreement. So those are the conversations that we had, you know, I wouldn't say that we came up with any any sort of a solid plan. I think I would report that, you know, at least from the conversation with those landowners that were present, there are some opportunities that would need to be further explored and and probably some agreements to be written or put in place for some of that parking, but it was a good, it was a good start, I guess, in terms of looking at what's available today and and how we might be able to utilize some of that.
So how do you see this moving forward, what's the, what are some of the next steps in keeping this moving along, so we're staying proactive and not reactive?
I think the low hanging fruit that's available there, we can continue to have these conversations and see what we can do, there is a, you know, just in terms of, I think the VPD side of that and making some of that, structuring that under VPD so that the public is aware that that's public parking, whether they are or aren't aware that that's public parking. I would say that's the low hanging fruit right now. I would, I would come back ultimately that as as we grow downtown and continue to to look to grow downtown, we we need to look at a more comprehensive parking plan for the downtown area, something that's going to come in and look at what do we have today, how are we using that today? What are the needs, where are the opportunities for growth downtown? And as those opportunities happen and and parking demand is increased, you know, what what are we planning to do to meet that demand? I would structure it to just, you know, we don't do too much in the public work sector without a plan in place, and and whether it's extending sewers, extending water, you know, all that stuff has master plans in front of it, so I would encourage us to think about and look at from a larger perspective of the downtown area, what that plan is and and maybe work to get something more structured in place. I think that, again, that that Norfolk and First area, you know, just working with those landowners that are have some adjacency and and getting some, see what we can do to get some agreements in place.
That's pretty much what I asked for you to do, we didn't think you were going to be coming back here with a and, you know, a solid answer, but this, that's, the main goal was to let people know that we want to be proactive moving forward and not have whoever, whomever buys that property come in there, we don't have a solution before that, you know, developer gets a place and gets his plan put in place, so I think that's what the main reason for that was, so. I think there was, was there a vehicle parking district representative at the meeting also?
There was, yes.
All right, thanks.
Danny, can you speak on if they were to apply for a TIF applicant, whoever might take on this development or do this, can you explain to us through the TIF application process as a council, some tools we have with them as far as addressing parking on that?
Yes, I did have some of these conversations in the last couple of weeks. I'm not really involved in the actual parking side of things, that's that's kind of out of my realm, so I wasn't part of that conversation, but some of you have reached out to me, and we've had some good staff conversation about the fact that moving to C2 does remove those designations, the the parking requirements, and it sounds like there, you know, there could be an intent to do that, to help the property owner with the marketability for this property, but also being concerned that if it doesn't come back before the council, then there could be parking issues in the future, which, you know, which is why we're having this conversation. As part of my conversations with some of you and with staff, what I had said was that it seems very, very likely that if we move it to C2, this would be developed in a way that would need some city involvement, which would be tax increment financing, most likely, or even a some kind of grant, where this the city would be a recipient such that there would be a sub-recipient agreement. What I have said was that if that happens, which seems to me to be very likely, I can't, I can't promise, you know, there's a risk that this wouldn't happen, but if there is tax increment financing involved as part of the redevelopment agreement, it would be very necess, it would be very proper in accordance with the statutes to have something where, as a function of that agreement, that the city council could require certain parking requirements. So even if you move it to C2, if you vote to change that zoning designation, there's a very good chance that in order to to move this project forward in a way that would be kind of what we've seen before, it's likely we would need TIF, and we can include the parking as part of the redevelopment agreement here.
Thank you.
Steve, with with meeting with Nissan store about potentially going to be vacant here shortly, Faith Regional, the Hy-Vee parking, and the property that the city owns, how many added parking stalls would be with what you had mentioned? I believe when we had the previous developer in here, we were had about 130, 135 parking stalls for everybody that was living in under that, we were about 200 short, are we are we getting close to that? 200, fulfilling those 200 parking stalls that are short?
Yeah, I, you know, I would say there's, if if you could, if Faith Regional was was open to, you know, some sort of an agreement there for leasing their space, I would say yes, I don't remember the exact, I don't remember the exact numbers. I think with that space, we were somewhere up around 175 stalls. Without that space, we were probably at about half that. That did sound, you know, there was some, and and that would just be that that space south, on the south side of Norfolk Avenue there. There was some conversation with Al about some of his, you know, some of the area on on one of his sites, he has multiple sites over there. And he did indicate in willingness to have some discussion about, again, a public parking lot over there. So that would add to that, I would say, I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I would say we're probably, again, without without a hard commitment from Faith Regional, we're, and if if that site of Al's was to come in to be a a public parking site, we're probably, that would probably add about 100, 125, somewhere in that range.
I think key though, the key to keep in mind right now is, we were just trying to get it out there that we're trying to be proactive with the parking, because we're only talking about a zoning change tonight, so we need to make sure that we stick to that topic, so. So anyway, any other discussion?
Shane, the only thing is that this this needs to be, this is, if this passes tonight, it can't, it just can't be put to the backside.
Right.
This plant has got to keep moving forward for the parking.
And I would argue that by by putting it out there tonight with the media and the individuals sitting out here tonight, we have stated that we will definitely keep moving forward, trying to figure a pro, a plan out for parking, because you can't just put it out there and pull, you know, you just kind of let the cat out of the bag now, so we know we need to work on this as a community, and we, and and just not pull back once, you know, it happens, so that would be not a good way to run a community.
Right. What would it, what, Steve, what time would it take to be, to have an honest, comprehensive plan for this?
It would, it would take, it'd probably take a better part of a year to to have a comprehensive plan. A plan that would engage the community and part of that discussion, engage the downtown business owners, engage the community, really look at that full footprint, so there's, if you just wanted to look at that eastern end, it probably wouldn't take that, you know, that long, but if we're going to look at all of downtown, as we continue to grow all of downtown, I would say you're looking at, you know, 12 to 15 months from the time of a, that a contract's in place, you know, to have somebody do that. I did look, you know, just in, as I looked at at that area and and looked at some of the rest of the VPD area, no, well, there's, there's, there are opportunities, there's unpaved VPD own ownership downtown as well. And so, you know, there's, there is some opportunity to probably take some load off some parking lots and move it to other parking lots. Not that, you know, we don't have any parking lots on that eastern end right now, but I think there's other, you know, there's, it's more than just looking at that particular area and what we need to do there, that would certainly be part of it, but I think we need to look at all of our parking downtown and how we're using it, managing it.
It's kind of amazing, we got as far down the road as we have with development in our downtown without a real comprehensive parking study done. So, especially something we should probably look at as a VPD or see how to fund that, what do you think the cost of, what would be the cost of a parking study like that, Steve?
Oh, I'd say it depends on how much we wanted to put into it, and what we, what we were looking for as an outcome. I would say you're looking at a very low-end study, 50 to 75, probably at the higher end, 100 to 100 and a quarter.
But this is also contingent of the, of the people that you had mentioned to to come to the table and and to play with with this as well, and they would have the right to refuse not to play with us. So then that, that, so do we have a backup plan?
Well, I mean, once it's, if it's, if it's rezoned to C2, the, you know, there's, I guess the backup plan is, is somebody, somebody's gonna, they're gonna need a capital stack that's going to require city participation in that redevelopment. So short, short term, you know, the the council would have control over that through the redevelopment agreement. Ultimately, as we would see some sort of a plan get into place, if that plan identified funding structures, you know, if that was kind of part of the, part of a larger plan, it takes some, we'd have to change some city code and get some things in place, and as contractors or developers came in, there's probably some sort of a additional cost to that developer to help participate in in parking development downtown. And there are, you know, as you look around, you know, just, again, to merge, to merge, some of the people that were present at that meeting were concerned about people parking on their development that they have going on, I think that was more around river activity, less around the development of First and Norfolk. We are working, as we, as you look a little bit to the north and east there, we're having some conversations with other landowners, again, about that have existing parking space, could we, could we enter into some kind of a lease agreement with that? Some of this parking, I think there's opportunity for paid parking if it's going to be related to the river activity. I think that needs to be explored as well. And and that could be private, you, you go to some of these communities, you you occasionally see and frequently will see private paid parking. I I do think there's some opportunity for that kind of a discussion too, and we have have reached out to one landowner about that.
All right, any further discussion here?
So the the best or beneficial, more beneficial outcome would be to resolve that conflict with the current owners, whether it be Faith Regional, the car lot, to get them on board first, because even if that does move forward and it becomes under council, and where we could dictate the the parking, if the new owner or the potential buyer, they could balk at that at the end of the day, and then we're back to square one, correct?
I guess as this moves forward, I would just ask that we continue to have a a regular up- update on on what this plan is moving forward for the comprehensive parking for downtown.
Yeah, so as, and and we will certainly do that. As we're going through the the budget process right now, you know, we'll be working to identify how we would, how, where we would get the funding to cover some sort of a more comprehensive study, but certainly in the meantime, you know, I think the meeting last Friday was a, was an excellent first step. I was, I was pleased with the conversation that was, that went around the table. I think there's some synergy there potentially with with a couple of those folks and some of their, some of their desires, so I'll work with administration and staff and we'll put a plan together to move the conversation forward and keep you up to, up to date.
The right over those, and I think the the foundation realizes that not only is C2 going to make this probably more marketable, but having the available parking in place is going to make it more marketable to a developer as well. And so, you know, you talked about 200 spaces, that's for C3 requirement, right? Well, if you look at C3 requirement downtown, there's not enough, it wouldn't meet C3 requirement, right? So if we want to extend this to downtown or C2, it won't be that big of a number probably that's there, but that's part of having people live and work and not there at the same time of day. And so we just realized that we have to be very intentional about making sure that we make as much parking available as possible, whether it's for our property or whether it's for the rest of downtown and Johnson Park. And so we're going to continue to work on getting some of those easements and potentially vehicle parking district in place so that it makes them remarkable to a future developer to develop that property. And so that's the the spot the foundation is in currently.
So by passing this on second reading, are we doing this prematurely without any of those easements in place?
I would say no, in the fact that it really comes down, that is going to tie to the value of the property. If we get those easements in place, it's going to make us easier on us to get sold. If we don't get it in place, it's going to make it harder. And we know there's plenty of parking there today for what we have there, and potentially there's plenty of parking there even for a smaller development than what initially was proposed earlier this year. The the other part of that, as Danny kind of mentioned, is we know that in order for this development to happen, it's going to probably require TIF and and a planned unit development, and that parking can be required there, too, in that. And so you guys are going to have the option to, that discussion will have to be had when that comes in front of you, hopefully, at some point.
That that's exactly right, is that we do have power on the redevelopment plan, and these parking requirements could be part of it.
That's right, yeah, whatever that may be.
Yeah, correct.
So we, going to your question, we understand that to have these easements in place and have some of this parking in place is going to greatly benefit us as a foundation in terms of marketing, getting that development sold. And so that's why we're going to keep working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no more further discussion, I'd ask for a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
I'm going to move so we can vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arns, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen, Muirin. Voting in opposition, Snorton, ordinance number 5877, carries on second reading.
Do I have to come back over there?
No, I think yes.
Okay, because there's, could still be possibility for.
I didn't hear that motion, so I assume we will go to item number 33.
All right, thank you.
Item 33 would look for motion to consider approval to purchase 1,000 replacement diffusers for the sum of $58,250 for the SBR sequencing batch reactor cell number three.
I'll offer consideration of approval of replacement diffusers.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, Rob Huntley, wastewater director.
Rob Huntley, wastewater superintendent. Just a second here. Mayor Council, WSBC is asking for permission to purchase 1,000 replacement diffusers for the number three SBR basin for the sum of $58,250. This includes shipping. It was budgeted this year for $60,000. We have been extending the life on these diffusers. They run a five-year cycle. By using this style diffuser, we get seven years on, which has a cost savings in both labor and materials. So, like, answer any questions you have about it, it's pretty straight up.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
This is pretty much something that has to be done.
It has to be done. So what these do is they produce our micro bubble that we use to put dissolved oxygen into our biological treatment in the plant, so. I say we've been able to extend them an extra two years, we just have a life cycle to them, so. Any other questions?
Other questions? Thank you, Rob. Any public discussion on this or input? Okay, seeing, hearing none, if no further council discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 34 would entertain a motion to consider approval of a TIPS contract, TIPS, with Inova for benches, trash cans, bike racks, and picnic tables at Johnson Park from the state cooperative purchasing agreements in the amount of $67,031.24.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, Nate Powell, Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor Council. Again, before you, is a purchasing agreement with Inova Furnishings to purchase our our bike racks, picnic tables, benches, and trash receptacles for Johnson Park. We're getting close. This is about a five-week lead time to get these installed, right about the time that I think everything's going to be wrapping up with throughout the park. So using the state cooperative purchasing agreements through the TIPS program, this is similar to our Sourcewell contracts that we we utilize. This will be funded through the Johnson Park Improvement Funds, and staff recommends approving the agreement with Inova Furnishings in the amount of $67,031.24. Any questions?
Nate, I don't have a question. I guess just for the record, maybe, could you state, and I know it shows it here, it's page 34, what what this price amount includes of how many of each item?
Yep. Hold that for you. This will be six trash receptacles in there. This will be 11 of benches throughout the park, another 13 benches without a back, that'll be around the playground and the and the splash pad areas. This will be nine bike racks, three, and there's two bike rack locations with three bike racks at each location, and then another six picnic tables, three under each shelter.
Thank you, Nate.
Nate, I guess this is, like I said, like Corey, he didn't have a question, more of a comment, but this was originally specked out in our original bid where the cost was, we felt as a council, the cost was too high when it originally came in, and this is when we decided we were going to break each individual thing down to have a cost savings for the for the city, and this is part of that, correct?
That's correct, because we will actually be installing that with our staff, so we're not paying a contractor.
So we're not paying contractor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And not paying contractor to purchase it and install it. We're doing the purchasing and we're doing the installation.
So there's, so the $67,000 is substantial savings compared to what it was originally when we had bid it out with the general contractor?
Yeah, I suspect generally it would probably be double the cost, but it just depends on where that bids out, yep.
And by doing this, we've actually saved across the entire project, we've saved a substantial cost by breaking these individually out.
Yeah.
And not leaving them in a full bid.
Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're at about $1.5 million in savings, is from what I recollect.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep, and we do have one more bid item that'll be coming late this summer, and that's for the nature playground and the irrigation part of the project, that'll be done this fall, but the park itself will be completed hopefully by 4th of July, mid-July. So we'll have several months before we do any more work in there to wrap that up.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Nate. Any public comment or input on this? Okay, seeing and hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, last but not least, under administrative reports to council, we have a presentation of the community development agency's 2023 annual tax increment financing report to governing bodies, and to bring that to us, we will hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer. Randy?
Yes, this is a report required by the community development law. We've had to do, the agencies had to do this for a number of years. They've added a couple new items that need to be reported this year, and this report goes to the city, the school, community college, NRD, the SU's, basically the entities whose taxes could be affected by the agency's projects. And the report has to list the number of TIF projects at the beginning in the year, what those projects were, the date they were approved, that's the date that redevelopment plan was approved, estimated project cost, initial projected valuation, and assessed valuation on January 1 of the calendar year of the report. And the new things added this year are the outstanding debt, TIF debt by project, and the expected payoff date. The first of those is easy to come by. We, of course, know what the agency owes on these at any point in time. The second one is a little bit more difficult because we don't know how assessed valuations will change, and it's particularly difficult in the case of phased projects where you may not have all phases of the project complete, you're kind of guessing as to how quickly the project will finish up. We made this expected payoff estimate based on the same way we have the developers do their estimated TIF bond, the maximum amount that will support. We don't allow increases in assessed value just because of market value increases. So we did not, in this expected payoff, assume there would be increases in market value which would increase assessed valuation. What we considered for the increases was as the additional property came online, as the phases came online. So that's what that expected payoff is based on. Those are conservative numbers because we do not, as I said, include just general increases in market value as part of our assessed value for determining the expected payoff. Expect most of these will pay off before those dates. And then also on the report is a little bit of additional information required on the new TIF projects approved during the year, and we approved five of those. Foundry Apartments was approved January 17. That's a residential apartment project down by Big Red. The groundbreaking for that was held just within the last week or so. That's been staked out, and I expect the real site work will start here shortly. The Kensington Building was also approved, and I will be converting that into a downtown boutique hotel. Philip Avenue Apartments is Kelby Herman's project for student housing. This is immediately south of the old Courtesy Ford building. Cornes Corrado, we had talked about that a little bit earlier today on that Al Raji's dealership, Nissan dealership, moving out of that area next to the old Alco site. That's going in the old former Office Max building, repurposing that. And then finally, the last project we approved in 2023 was the Sunset Plaza Mall. That gives us a total of 29 TIF projects. None of the TIF projects paid off during the year. We have 27.27% of the city declared blighted and substandard, 35% is allowed under statutes. That is the report required by statutes. We've had some questions on TIF this year. I've included in the report some additional information related to things that have been asked, related to our TIF projects. I'm often asked how many of our TIF bonds have paid off. There's six of them that have paid off, all paid off before the 15 years. Not a lot of them, $2,552,500 worth. The, I've included several charts in here to show how the city's TIF debt compares to, first of all, other first-class cities, which is the chart you're looking at now, and then all cities in Nebraska issuing TIF debt. This is the percent of incremental valuation to the city's total valuation, and by total valuation, that would be both the valuation that the cities and the schools' taxes are levied upon, plus the incremental valuation whose taxes come back to the agency and go to pay the TIF debt. We're at 4.6%, which, as you can see, is right in the middle of the pack for first-class cities, and this one's all the cities in Nebraska that have issued TIF debt. It's a little hard to read the fine print on this, but the green bar represents Norfolk, and as you can see, when you look at all the cities in Nebraska that are issuing TIF, we're, once again, towards the middle of the pack. Something else I looked at was, and this is another question I get asked a lot, is when we expect this assessed value to come back on the tax rolls, normally you can't have incremental valuation go for more than 15 years to pay TIF debt. There are some exceptions to that, but that's the normal rule, and once the TIF bonds are paid paid off, regardless of whether the fifteen years is up, the incremental valuation goes back on regular tax rules, and if the bonds don't get paid before the fifteen years is up, they just go away, and incremental valuation goes back on the tax rules in that case. So here's a, this is basically a byproduct of that new item that I said was difficult to come up with when we expect the TIF bonds to pay off. When we, to come up with that, we had to go in and look at when we expect each one of those phases, in the case of a phased project, to hit the fifteen year, and also when we expect there to be enough taxes collected to have paid off that TIF bond. So those are the estimates. Like I say, I think these are conservative, and could be off because we're guessing as to when these phases will be completed and what the actual valuation of those phases will be, but this is a guess as to when we think in the dollar amount of incremental valuation coming back onto the tax rules. The next couple of slides are information I got from the Economic Development Department. They've been tracking estimated project costs for the last six years or so. I believe what they have on here is by date the redevelopment contract was approved, so there'll be some timing differences between this and the report to the governing bodies because that's based on plan approval date. This shows the maximum amount of TIF authorized in those contracts, and subtracts that from the estimated project costs in the contract to get the private dollars or dollars other than TIF that's going into the project. And as you can see, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-three, every dollar of TIF, we're expecting over five dollars of other money to be invested in those projects. This is also looking at the housing units projected in each one of those years for these projects. These housing units aren't necessarily constructed at this time, but they're what the plan is to construct over the life of the project. For instance, in two thousand twenty-three, as I mentioned earlier, several projects were approved, and one of those is Foundry Apartments. We just did the groundbreaking for that last week. That will actually get started and real dirt moving shortly, and those apartment buildings will then come up out of the ground, but those are future-looking. Philip Avenue Apartments, as I mentioned earlier, was also a two thousand twenty-three project. That project's underway, but I don't believe anybody's living in those apartments yet. Also looking at housing, since the housing studies indicate we have a big need for housing, economic development tracks the number of dwelling units based on permits issued, and you can see going back to two thousand, the number of permits issued for, number of dwelling units, building permits were issued for, and those are compared then to the amount of housing units the housing study showed we need. For instance, the twenty-six, twenty sixteen housing study, based on medium population growth projection, showed we needed seven hundred and sixty-two additional units of housing. We actually had seven hundred and twenty-two of additional units of housing in, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, and the chart shows by year what housing unit, the number of housing units those permits were issued for. A lot of those housing units are TIF projects. For instance, the three hundred and forty, the biggest bump up in that graph for two thousand twenty, had a hundred and sixty apartments in Victory Village. Excuse me just a minute. Hundred and sixty apartments in Victory Village, fifty-six in Nora Park, and sixty-six apartments in Legacy Bend, we're told, two hundred and eighty-two apartment units that were TIF. There's also single-family units going in and TIF projects, triplexes and duplexes. So it's not just apartments, but those are where the big numbers are. It's similar if you look at the two thousand nineteen, those hundred and ninety-three units, ninety of them were senior living facility at Fountain Point, which was a TIF project. Forty-four of them were apartments on Legacy Bend, one hundred and thirty-four of those hundred and ninety-three units being related to TIF. And also in that year, there was a single-family housing units going in and TIF projects, duplexes and so on. It gives you a good idea of how TIF has helped spur housing development in the city and get us to closer to meeting our goals that the housing studies say we need to have. For instance, the two thousand twenty-one housing study says that the medium population projection, we needed seven hundred and sixty-nine housing units by two thousand twenty-six. So far, we've got three hundred and eighty-one based on permits issued, meaning that we need to add to three hundred and eighty-eight over the next couple of years. Anyway, that's my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And Candace is also here. Like I said, her department put together a lot of these numbers.
Thank you, Randy. Lot of information there. Council, any questions for Randy based on that report?
You know, I did have one question. If you go back like two slides, you had the TIF payoffs were like, that one?
That slide?
Twenty forty, twenty forty-one, twenty forty-four. Typically, these TIF bonds are like fifteen years and/or get paid off sooner. So what extends that?
All of these are, we don't have any, within these numbers here, any twenty-year TIF projects, which in Nebraska would primarily be something extremely light and substandard area. All we do have a lot of is phased projects, particularly for housing, and quite easily those could go five, six, seven years.
And then, and then that fifteen-year?
Each phase wouldn't have more than fifteen years.
At the completion of that phase.
So you'll have, these numbers show in some cases, not when the bond's going to pay off, but when the first phase of that project is going to hit its fifteenth year and go back on the tax rules, and the next year, the second phase, it would hit the fifteen year and go back on the tax rules. If it's not paid off by the time you get to the last of those phases or the drop dead date and bond issue, and the bond expires unpaid, and it goes back on the tax rules anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Randy, I think there's some value in the process here of really grasping how TIF works. That number that was cited, one dollar provided in TIF, resulting in five dollars in private investment, which tracks closely with, if you look at those cumulative totals, the percentage of TIF compared to the total investment numbers, which is around fifteen percent, I think. I had to notice, too, that a lot of the projects, I'd say a third, maybe more, of these TIF projects in the last six years have been housing. You focused a lot on the housing numbers here. Can you talk a little bit about if it weren't for TIF? If TIF weren't an incentive available for housing development specifically? Because TIF has to go to something in a project. There's a TIF application that requires the money received in TIF go to pay for the infrastructure to do the development, and in housing, that's primarily water, streets, and sewer. So if those portions of housing development projects weren't eligible to be paid for with TIF, we didn't use TIF at all, we would, housing developments would have to most likely be paid for through assessments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then ultimately, who, those assessments are primarily paid for by residents, right? By the residents of that development.
They're a debt against the land, so if you buy a house, normally, when you buy that, or buy a lot or a house, normally if there's any unpaid assessments, those get paid off as part of your closing. If they don't, they remain a lien against the property and will be paid off eventually one way or the other, either through the normal annual payments, or if worse comes to worse, we'll foreclose on the property. That rarely happens, so.
So then part of the idea with utilizing TIF for housing is to ultimately help keep those infrastructure costs down for the ultimate household residence of that development?
That's correct, and if, in the case of apartment buildings, it keeps the overall costs of the project down, and they can afford to have lower rents than they would otherwise.
Thank you.
Randy, there's a couple of projects I see in here that were approved, but they have zero indebtedness. What happens with those projects that we approve, but they either hold off or they don't, they don't do them?
We go to the, and talk about those projects. One of them, the one that looks really goofy, is Skyline Apartments had zero debt, and that was a two thousand seventeen project. That's a low-income housing project. They're valued differently than most property is. They don't look at what that project could sell for. They look at the income stream from those projects and discounted a cap rate that's determined by a committee at the state level. That particular project has almost no incremental valuation. Part of it, I believe, is due to the fire they had about the time they got this project done. They had a fire and lowered their incomes. They had to move people around and get those apartments reconstructed and cleaned up. Part of it might be the cap rate increasing since they planned on this, but I think we're holding less than ten thousand dollars in criminal taxes for this project after all this time, so they haven't had any real incentive to get out there and have us issue that TIF bond. I'll probably reach out to them here when I get some time and talk to them about what they want to do with that one, they want to issue it. Some of the other ones, like the Gary redevelopment, is just early, still in its early phases, and they just haven't come to ask us to issue a TIF bond. If the developer isn't needing to pledge those to a bank, a lot of times, they'll wait until they've got at least the first phase of the project done, and what their actual costs are by those invoices and stuff to document that, and then we'll issue a TIF bond. That's the easier way to do it, the way I prefer to do it, but in many cases, they need to pledge that TIF bond to cover their loan at the bank, and they'll want to issue those upfront. So we've got several of these that are just in their early phases, and one unusual one, which is Skyline Apartments.
Any other questions or discussion? I did highlight one number here. So the total value of investment, two hundred and forty million dollars over six years in TIF projects. The Norfolk Daily News has an editorial today that does a really good job of explaining how TIF works, and one of the things that it hits on is that every TIF project has to prove a but-for clause, and Candace, this is maybe one that you can help out with, too, since it deals with economic development. And what that basically means is that if not but for the utilization of TIF for the project, the project wouldn't happen. The developer has to essentially prove that to the governing body for TIF to be usable in that instance. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes, we asked the developer as part of his TIF application to certify to us that he would not do that project but for the TIF, and then we also asked for his financial estimate for the projects.
And that's not some condition that the city of Norfolk puts on this, that's a state law.
That's a state law in most states.
Ruled and governed by state statute.
Yeah, and most states have a similar requirement that but for TIF, the project wouldn't go forward.
So then that stands to reason that this two hundred and forty million dollars of investment in six years in the city of Norfolk would not have happened if TIF were not usable and implemented in Norfolk.
That's correct. I mean, it's possible there may have been some other project done on that property, but it would not have been the project that was brought forward to the city for TIF, and probably would have resulted in a lesser project at lower costs than what is available because of the TIF.
Very good. Well, I personally think those numbers speak for themselves. Any other discussion or comments on this? Okay. All right, if none, no further questions from the council? What's that? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just take a privilege here to remind the public, those that are here and those that might be listening at home or tuning in later to watch the meeting, that there will be an open house right here in the council chambers tomorrow night from six to eight P.M., and that open house will have, it's advertised as a public meeting of the governing body, because I do anticipate we'll have majority of council members there, as well as the mayor, city staff, to talk about the recommendation that was provided by the Citizens Committee for the Police Department Expansion and Renovation Project, and that would be to discuss and talk about and get feedback from the public on a local option sales tax and what that would mean, what it would involve. So there'll be a short presentation from staff to explain again and remind the public of what was proposed and discussed, and then that'll be a chance for everybody to meet one-on-one and ask as many questions as you want to with your elected officials and staff to try to help get a better understanding of that project. So I hope to have good attendance tomorrow night.
Thank you, Andy. Hope you all join us tomorrow. That is it for this meeting in Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.